For those of you who are guests here, now is the time you will probably want to leave because we're about to get into the nuts and bolts of the meeting. And forgive me for not welcoming you on the front end. You are very welcome. We wanted you to be here, but thank you very much. Thank you for sharing your friends with us.
Major days, it's time to run.
Major days, run.
Get back to work.
Bad taste.
What's that?
Forgot to welcome everybody. Bad taste. But still. Come down, get it.
Working in.
As Joyce is coming down, could we have deputy chief come back up here? We enjoyed his bright red face of embarrassment when he just walked in. No, we're kidding. We're teasing. Yes, you do. Please. So we'll see.
Okay, so hello, how are you all today?
Good morning.
We have, I have my normal budget report, which, you know, usually doesn't have too much to it, and it's kind of the same now because while we've opened the 2023 budget, we only have two months' worth of entries of expenditures. So it's kind of hard to make any call on how we're going to do. Right now, everything looks great, but we have, you know, a long time to see the effects of the paid parental leave and overtime and things like that. So it's really not a good time to have a projection on 2023. So maybe I would think by April, once we've completed the March, you know, we have a good quarter, we should be able to give you some idea of how that is. And then the 2022 has closed out, and we ended up turning back in. If you look at a report, it looks like we turned in a whole lot of money, but that's because they had added the money for the RIC and the property control and the, what's the other one that we did with? Those three items that they gave us $23 million for, second precinct, property control and second precinct, yeah. So those things were added, some money for CAD program, last year's cars that we asked, you know, for this year's cars were added last year. So when you back all of those unusual items out of it, we turned in $4.7 million. So that was about 2.5% of the budget. And of that, about, I think, 2% was from the, well, 78% of that $4 million was from salaries and fringes. And that was made up, the salaries are, you know, the salary, base salary, less the overtime. So we did have some money remaining from that. And then in the fringe department, we had money left over for medical insurance that we have no control over, that's budgeted by the budget office, how much we put in there. So we were very, you know, we turned in all but 2.5% of the budget. So we were, I think we did a really good job of living within our budget without having to ask for anything extra.
We say that differently in raw dollars, that's what, $700,000?
Well, we turned in $4,700,000.
Yeah, but the non-people expenses?
Well, the not, was about $1 million. And then the salaries and fringes that we returned were almost $4 million. So it's, you know, it was surprising that that's where the money was, but again, that's usually the fringe benefits. There's $1 million there that we have no control over that really always helps us make it if we're short in the salaries. So we, I think we did pretty good. It was, I compared it to last year, and we were pretty comparable to last year as well. But now this year, you know, we have raises in there since December 25th, the new raises went in there. We have more of the precincts on the 12-hour shifts, so we're paying shift differential. We have the paid paternity leave that's going to, you know, impact the overtime and things. So we have a lot of things to address as they come up this year. Okay? So that's really all I have for that. I did want to suggest that because I don't have a lot every month, that you might want to consider just quarterly having the fiscal services person address it, if you all would want to consider that. Maybe more if things are happening, but, you know, like January and February, I really didn't have a lot to tell you, so.
I'll look at my peers as I ask, make this statement. I think quarterly, unless there's something significant, probably acceptable.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yes. Okay. I mean, if there's something important, I would definitely come up and tell you about it, but, you know, you have a lot of things to cover, so.
Commissioner, which way?
I agree, except that I think next month it will be interesting to hear
Absolutely.
what your projections are, and that might change.
Yes, so in April, that will cover the first quarter, and I think we can give you some good, good numbers on, you know, what we, what we're projecting at that time. Okay? And the only other thing is that next week, the chief is scheduled to have a presentation, a short presentation to the county executive about this year's budget. And from what I understand, it's just a high overview of, you know, what we were appropriated and how we're going to spend it, and if there's anything new we need to bring to their attention.
And is that a normal process?
We've never done it. So we'll, we'll see what they're looking for.
We'll look forward to that update next month.
Okay? Okay? Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Members of the board, good morning. I was going to propose that we do crime stats yearly.
I don't think I need to wait for our peers to say.
No, of course. All right, so obviously, the numbers that will be presented today reflect January 1 through February 28 of the current year. And obviously, as always, please stop me as I move through this presentation if you have any questions. All right, so our notable events, also known as our internal affairs slide. As you can see, the citizen complaints holding decently steady. Internal investigations way down, uses of force up 67%. Vehicle accidents, I know it says 21%, but really only six from last year. And then the vehicle pursuits are up quite a bit. So before we get into failure to yields, give you some context to those numbers before you ask. So for uses of force, I asked, we had a meeting yesterday to try to figure out the 67% spike in uses of force. Some of the things noted, so fleeing by foot from suspects on our stops rose by 50% over that in 2022. Physical aggression towards the police on those rose by 44%. Resisting arrest rose by 56%, 23 from 22. Can't explain why, that is, but understanding that more people, at least in this two-month period, have become more hostile towards the police. Even with those increases in use of force incidents, citizens' injuries occurred on 42% of uses of force in 2022. However, comparatively, it's 38% in 2023. So we've used more physical restraint than we had. Physical restraint of, or 40 of the 55 incidents were that of physical restraint, so the simple pulling of somebody who's not being compliant, that was 74% of all use of force this year. Our employee injury rate fell to 7% this year in those 55 uses of force. In the 33 last year, 16% of employees were injured. I think the men and women are doing a better job, understanding that people are being more physically violent towards us, but trying to subdue those things as much as possible. And then finally, as you'll see later in slides, our self-initiated activity has obviously increased due to 12-hour shifts, most notably in the county precinct. And again, we'll get into that a little bit later, but because of that overlay shift and some things that they're able to do. Vehicle pursuits, continued work of VCI and special enforcement details, which have been on the uptick this year as compared to last, has generated more of those police pursuits. Of the 15 initiated, 14 of them were initiated by our department, all for felony offenses. And the other one was initiated by St. Louis City, and our officers became involved in that one. Any other questions about any of these other numbers?
Asterix around.
Okay, so failure to yields, if you remember, the reason the asterisk on 2022 is because we didn't start tracking that until end of the first week, beginning of the second week of February last year. Still, 723 is a magnificent number because we had 408 of those in January of this year, and that leaves 300 plus again this month. These are the first two months over the past calendar year that we've seen north of 300. I believe the August of 2022 had about 276, which was the highest that we've seen. Again, more people fleeing from the police that we're seeing at least in the first two months.
People fleeing, or our officers are more used to reporting it, so it's?
I think it's a combination of both, but also understanding that, especially in North County, which again, as we can see, so North County and Jennings on our failure to yields, so, so the number exactly this year or this month in February was 305. 60% of the failure to yields year-to-date have been in the first or eighth precinct. Reason I mention that is, as I said earlier, with the first precinct having more manpower, they were on 12s last year, but continuing on 12s and having that overlay shift, allowing their officers to do more self-initiated things, knowing that most of this is happening up in North County, we are seeing more and more of that. It may be a slight bit of the reporting, but from an officer's standpoint, understand that it's extremely simple. If a car takes off, they're simply just getting on the, on the radio, noting to the dispatcher, who's then logging that as, as a call for service.
Do the use of force mirror the stats in terms of failure to yield all coming from the first?
No, because one doesn't have anything to do with the other, because if they're failing to yield, we're not chasing them.
Right.
So they're not, those are not resulting in additional use of force, if that's what you're asking.
So where are use of forces coming from?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, mainly in North County.
Okay.
Yes. And then here's the breakdown, obviously, the heat map with, with those failure to yields. If you include the fourth precinct, I don't know what I did there. You include the fourth precinct in that, so you take 1, 8, and 4 of those precincts, and the overall failure to yields of the 723, 75% of those have occurred in those three precincts. So this was new last month that my team has put together, which I kind of like. It's just quick highlights overall of the department. This is February only. 634 total arrests, 123 guns seized, and 72 DWI reports. So arrests increased from 2634 from 600 in January. We had 98 guns seized in January and 123 in February. Again, that self-initiated activity is a large part of this. And our DWIs, we had 52 in January, up to 72 this month.
I will share, if you don't mind. I have a colleague who knows that I'm on the board, and he mentioned that he was seeing a lot more activity on the side of the road with people being pulled over, whether it's DWRs or speeding or whatever it might be, found that to be a positive thing based on how he drove.
Yes.
For what that's worth.
I would agree. We can get people to stop, it'd be even more productive. All right, so for the crimes against persons, obviously, the homicides down by three this year. Some of the notable things that, I know that assaults are broken down because of Nyberg's and, what is it, three, four, five, six different categories all the way up through intimidation. If you take the combination of all of those assaults, overall assaults are up 3.5% year-to-date. And then, please don't restart, the human trafficking, as you can see, is eight to zero. Seven of the arrests for human trafficking, so all of those are generated out of our Bureau of Special Investigations, and seven of those eight, I know that that's a large number as compared to zero, resulted from one search warrant that they conducted. Homicides by the numbers, again, throw these in here for the month of February as well as year-to-date. Understand that the difference in numbers, as you can see, it says 10 to 9, and we were reporting 8 to 5. The previous slide, this is for St. Louis County and our municipalities that we have contract patrols with. This is anything investigated by crimes against persons. So for instance, Ferguson PD has a homicide, they want us to handle it, that number goes in. So again, just for reference when you're looking at these numbers in your packet as well. Crimes against property, again, taking, flipping here. So if we take robberies, and again, I know Nyberg's has broken it down further, you know, the firearms, knives, and strong arms and all of that, but if you take those four categories and combine them, the overall robberies are down 25% year-to-date, a total of 30 to 40, which is a good thing. Burglaries are up slightly, 11%. Really, it's only 12 total year-to-date, but spoke with the supervisor of the burglary unit, who said that the majority of large spike is from residential burglaries in the North County precinct. So the big number here is the one that we've been talking about for quite some time, really since probably about May last year. That's the motor vehicle theft number. As you can see, we're up close to 40%, 399 from 292. Some of the reasons in some of the notes that I have noted here. So the number of vehicles stolen has increased just due to Kia and Hyundai, Hyundai thefts, period, this year. So thefts of Kia and Hyundai's are up 597% year-to-date from 2022, while thefts of all other vehicle makes combined are down 48%. Thefts began to rise, if you remember, in May of '22, and peaked around August and September of '22. The number of Kia and Hyundai's being stolen has slowly been decreasing actually since October, but have not yet returned, obviously, to those previous rates. And mid-February of '23, Kia and Hyundai released that free theft deterrent software, so numbers are hopefully, we'll see how it goes, but expected to decrease more in the coming months. Year-to-date 2022, so again, for January and February of 2022, Kia and Hyundai made up 11% of all stolen vehicles. January and February of 2023, Kia and Hyundai made up 56% of all stolen vehicles. And then just to break those numbers down just a little bit further to give you even more context, in 2022, there were, January, February combined, 14 total Hyundai's stolen and 18 total Kias. Those numbers in '23, 111 Hyundai's, 112 Kias. So the massive spike continues to be from that, hopefully with the new deterrent system and some of this additional self-initiated proactive policing, we can start to see that go down.
Prints that in stealing all of their makes and models, people are focusing on Hyundai's. So if Hyundai's fix goes in and those fall, we infer that the other ones will likely increase.
Yes, you would think that they would come back to the meme, but we'll see how that works out over the next few months. Yep. And then crimes against society, not a whole lot to point out here, other than the drug-narcotic violations, including paraphernalia, would be down, obviously, because of legalization of marijuana. The one that I obviously would like to highlight on here is the DWIs, up almost 80%, mainly not only because of the work of the men and women division of patrol, but to be honest, it's the great work of the highway safety unit. 70% of all of the DWIs written this year have been from highway safety, which is 89 of that 120 total. And our calls for service, the moving average, again, this is not uncommon year-to-date for a February, is obviously below that moving average on all eight of our precincts. But this is what, you can just see, you don't need to, you can look at all of these numbers, but the main thing is the North County precinct. If you look in October, November, and December, prior to giving the North County precinct that additional manpower and that overlay shift that they so desperately needed, you can see where they're, every, every month under 1,000 self-initiated, and two of those months under 800. They've now, in back-to-back months, because of that additional manpower, who are helping respond to directed calls for service, it's free and more guys up to, to do self-initiated activity. So they are over their moving average, which is very good to see, and we'll see, again, throughout the year, how those numbers overall in crime are affected. Assume there's no questions on top calls, which suit cases once again. And then finally, our TSR data that we throw in here, our TSR committee is going to be meeting March 23rd to sit down and break out the quarterly numbers. So again, if there's anything, any discrepancies that we find, I will note that. And that is all that I have.
I know that next week, myself, some of the West County chiefs to discuss putting together auto theft task force, which is going to be, I think it's on the 29th. Cox and his guys have been doing a lot of directed patrol certain evenings of the, of the month to concentrate on those, on those types of thefts. So we're going to try to get together again, like I said, to put together auto theft task force, in, just in discussion right now.
Mention in the media about a crime and policing commission was initiated apparently by Representative Sparks, former county officer, and Paige, I think it was on, what, Tuesday of last week?
I don't know.
Crime and policing.
And I don't know if that's Sparks, who put that together.
Not.
He was one of our former officers who went into, yeah, so, anyway.
And, well, ask it of you, whomever, what is the intent of that? I mean, what, what's the commission do that isn't already in place? What's their purpose?
I think he's trying to get more.
How do we all interact with them?
I think he's trying to get more penalties for, for auto thefts, breaking into vehicles, things like that, just a stiffer penalty for it, which everybody's trying to do.
And do we know what the status of that timeline for passage of that?
I have no idea, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Becker?
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
I don't want to rub it into the city, but I do have a photograph with zero left on the clock, and we won by three points, 38, 35. I just want to clarify that record, so.
How's that?
Good point.
All right. Share that photo so we can share it.
I will, I'll, I'll send it to you, but it'll be on our website, too, so, I'll be able to take care of that, so. So good morning. For the monthly staffing report, we have 83 vacancies now. For the past three or four months, we've been hovering around that 80 mark. And in the academy right now, we have 14 recruits. We started with 18, two left recently, and the chairman and I communicated yesterday in regard to the specifics of that, and I'll be happy to get into the specifics in closed session because I have to identify some employees and the efforts that we undertook to retain those two. And I think that'll be important for you to understand that. So the class 207 is going to graduate in June. There's 28 recruits there right now. There's three open enrollment. We started with three open enrollment, and we started with 14 municipal, and there's 11, so they've lost three, we've lost four. And currently, for class 208, in regard to recruiting, we have three candidates that will be going to the class. Chief signed off on those last week after final review board. They're really three outstanding people, and they'll be great police officers. Next week, we have a final review board with three recruits and one experienced officer. And as far as current applications go, as of this moment, we have 73 applications that we're processing, all the way from initial screening into the background process, and then, of course, the four people that are going to be on final review board next week. We have 13 experienced officer applications, that's as part of that 73. And then for security officer, we have 15 applications being processed. And that's being done with, when we're about three-quarters of an investigator down. So I say that because we're down one intermittent background investigator, and we're down about a fourth of the time because one of our background investigators is helping out instructing at the academy. And the, the whole background process takes, if it's someone who's young with a lot, not a whole lot of past, it takes about six to eight weeks to process them, if the applicant is cooperative and timely in getting us the information that we need. I want to shout out to Lauren King. She came up with a, a system to assist the background process, to automate it more. It's going to, I think, speed it up. It will also save us probably about $10,000 a year. So shout out to Lauren for that. And under all these circumstances, the background investigators, the recruiters who assist in recruiting and the backgrounds, Lieutenant Osendorf, everybody in personnel services is doing a great job. With respect to the professional staff, we have 43 vacancies. That's down about three from last month. We still have zero record clerks, so it's great that the, the record room is staffed fully. That was previously a problem. It's been going pretty well lately. Security officers, vacancies are 12, that's the same as last month. And we, as I said, we have about 15 in process right now. COVID kind of remains the same. We have two out right now, five out on military separation. I expect in the summer that'll, that'll go up a little bit because of the two-week leaves or two-week assignments and so forth. The current applications for this month that we've, for February, I'm sorry, are 19 police officer, and 11 of those are in background. And with respect to the averages of police officer retirements and resignations, and professional staff retirements and resignations, we're actually at a pace that's a little lower than the previous. we're actually at a pace that's a little lower than the previous year, but it's kind of like what Joyce said with the fiscal aspect. We have to kind of wait and see how that pans out as far as our averages go. The, for two thousand twenty-two, the total number of applications that we received were three hundred and fifty-five police. I know you've heard me say before that five years ago, we might have had eight or nine hundred applications, and clearly after two thousand twenty, that has dipped down. And professional staff, we had one thousand five hundred and eleven applications, and that doesn't mean that we had fifteen hundred and eleven people because a lot of folks will apply for two, three, maybe four different positions, so it, it can be duplicative. Doug, can you put that first slide up, please? All right, and this is in your packet. So these are the NBQs involuntary withdrawals for the professional staff of two thousand twenty-two. I want to point out that since October first, the chief and I sit down and go through all NBQs and, and review them and, and talk about them and before I approve the, the NBQ. So you'll see the lion's share of people that aren't hired or voluntary withdrawals. That's a garden variety of, of folks actually voluntarily withdrawing or, and for the reasons of telling us they're not interested anymore, they found another job. There's some folks who don't even reply to us. We, the recruiters are persistent, and they get a hold of these people, and then, of course, finally, they say, yeah, I'll withdraw. So it, they're doing a good job of staying in contact with these people, the people that maybe aren't as self-motivated as we would like as applicants. And, and you can see the other sections are, are testing failures is pretty significant. That's one-fifth. That, that could be anything from the typing test for dispatchers or records room and care, or the IPMA, just a kind of a standard, basic intelligence test, if you will, test for the police officers. And then the SME board, that's subject matter expert boards, that is primarily put on by communications.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Tell me the difference between character and moral perpetuity.
Well, moral perpetuity might be something a little more specific, like perhaps deviant sexual behavior, something like that. Character might be a, a poor work history, never giving two weeks' notice, changing jobs every, you know, two weeks or what have you, or other indications that they perhaps don't have the, the qualities that we're interested in with respect to perhaps stealing from the employer or cheating on their timesheet, those sorts of things.
Director, we got a question on both slides. The multiple reasons told us this before, and I don't remember. That's not the traditional miscellaneous, and that's twenty-five percent. That's multiple things that are already on the pie chart?
Yes, sir. That's a collection of these other things with the exception of voluntary withdrawal. It wouldn't include.
Interesting, an Pareto chart, right? This perfectly fits it, that the big three you mentioned, voluntary withdrawal, testing failure, and multiple reasons, up eighty-four percent of all the reasons, right? Solve one, hopefully solve our problem.
Doug, if you can go to the next slide. And then that, that's the police. You can see it's a little higher on voluntary withdrawal, pretty similar on the multiple reasons. The testing failure is actually a little lower, and of course, that would also include for the police, the PT testing, which is typically the problem. Of course, we do, on all the testing, we give at least three opportunities. We give them a little bit of time in between. If your PT score is bad, then obviously you can't turn that around in three days. We, we try to help them along. Officer Minor is an intermittent employee. Officer Shelton, one of our recruiters, they conduct a, a weekly PT encouragement, training seminar at where they're actually working out with people, with applicants that want to improve their score.
Same comment. The big three from a Pareto standpoint are coincidentally eighty-four percent.
So next slide, please, Doug. All right, so the, the, the next three documents are the accident interview summaries for two thousand twenty-two. It's pro-staff, commissioned, and then both of them combined. They're, they're relatively identical. The, the number of folks that are in professional staff of the forty-one that were surveyed, fourteen of them are going to the private sector, and five of them are, are staying in law enforcement. Seven were retiring. So, and strikingly, too, the, the new pay, if they choose to answer, that's why these numbers don't add up to the total number of surveyed, twenty-one or half are getting more pay, and perhaps the others that didn't answer would, are also getting a pay increases. And you can see how they, they rate the department on a scale of one to four. Overall, relatively high, a three out of four. And the professionalism is, is high also, three point two out of four, which is pretty consistent with the the commissioned officers. There were sixty-seven surveys on the commissioned, and twenty-three of them remained in law enforcement. Some of them went on to federal law enforcement jobs, which are, is difficult for us to compete with because it's more money. And, but of course, some of our competition is St. Charles County and Jefferson County. I'll get into that in a moment. And we had thirteen retirements also. Kind of the same across the board with pro-staff and commissioned. Recommend working here is right at about ninety percent. That's been consistent over the last couple of years. And whether or not someone spoke to their supervisor or not is a little over half overall for everyone. And I will tell you that when we, we know when somebody's going through a background investigation of another agency because they come to Personnel Services to look at it, look at the employee's file, and when we find that out, if that's the first time we found it out, we immediately contact that person's supervisor. We take the action that we can to try and retain that employee. I think we probably have about a one-fifty batting average maybe on retaining people. I think people pretty much have their minds made up for a variety of reasons. But we have been, through those efforts, been able to retain people, cutting those, their applications or their exits off at the pass.
Before you move on, on all three of them, comment that they look, the career advancement opportunities, it's something we pride ourselves on. It's something we sell from a recruiting standpoint, but yet it's the number one reason. Understand what the disconnect is between what we sell and what we offer and what they see.
I think it's just sheer numbers. There are only so many people can be promoted, and without getting into specific people, I can think of some that have left, and they probably weren't good candidates to be promoted. Some of them, some of them are excellent employees, and I'm not saying they're bad employees either. It's just only so many people can be promoted. There's only so many positions. So it's, it's, I think the short answer is just sheer numbers.
So is it, is advancement, does advancement promotion, or does it specialty units? Change precincts? Does it mean a different role, not a different role from an officer?
It, it would be both because a lot of people look at specialized assignments as an advancement, so it would be the same thing. It would be all bundled into that. A, a good example is an officer left within the past year and wanted a specialized assignment opportunity. It was very specific. But that officer could not get it because we didn't have the opening for it. And that was part of the impetus of that officer leaving. So sometimes there's just not the space for the person to go, and they get disenchanted or want to move on, and they do.
Sure, everybody needs to ask that in the next month, maybe two, from a board meeting standpoint, as you do your exit interviews, perhaps one more deep dive question around what, what were you looking for from a career? I'd personally like to understand whether it's just about promotional opportunities, whether it's something else that is not meeting their needs. Similarly, we've had that conversation multiple times. Morale continues to be the lowest, the lowest number we have. What does that mean, right? What, what does morale mean to the group? I'm not sure I personally understand how you get there, but we've got to figure out what that means. Is that too broad of a term, morale? Is it too narrow of a term, morale? Is it bad morale? Is it fine morale? Just what, what does that one mean? It'd impact our, our retention rates.
I think, and I did a unscientific poll in that regard because I know we've talked about it before, and I my understanding from everybody I talked to, and I think those interviewed understand this, that morale is the, the general connotation of what morale means, you know, the, the confidence in the group as a whole, or the individual's confidence in the group or the organization as a whole, as with respect to its functioning and tasks at hand. And I, I don't know, we can talk about it further. I, I don't know if that can be clarified anymore, but I'd certainly be willing to stay ahead of that.
I poked at two of the, the lower-ranked ones. That professionalism with departments complement all of you, as we having that score at a three-point highest overall score. Thank you. Compliment.
All right, so as I said, the chairman and I were corresponding recently about, as I know you all look at the personnel orders, and it appeared the resignations for January, February of this year were, were very high. And a, as I said before, we're still on track to be a little bit lower than we were for the entirety of two thousand twenty-two with respect to resignations and retirements, but it's a little too soon to tell what that actual average will be. But a, at this time last year in two thousand twenty-two, we only had two resignations and two, two resignations commissioned, two resignations professional staff. Of those four, only one, one went on to law enforcement. The, the rest went on to the private sector. In two thousand twenty-three for January and February, we had twelve police officers resign. Two of those went to St. Charles. Three of those went to municipalities. One of them went to federal, and half of them, six of them, went to the private sector.
Those are concerning statistics.
They are.
The, the internal movement. Part of the reason we put lateral pay in, that's, that's why we put that stuff in, and it solved what we intended it to solve. Now, certainly our, rest of our employees who are, were subject to that, received a well-deserved increase, but we were after it for two reasons, traction and retention. Doesn't sound like either one has moved in the direction that we wanted.
No, but you can't prove the negative, but I would argue if we didn't have it, we'd have more of an exit, so.
You have no sense.
Maybe treading water, if you will, so I'll, I'll say it again, over and over again. But we need to keep pushing for more pay, and we need to keep pushing for take-home cars because those are the, the things we can compete with St. Charles County and Franklin County Guard.
Or maybe that's not what we would compete with that morale and ability to advance, and some others might be willing to take us money for if they either opt, don't have it these other places. Perhaps we need to think about what our value proposition to our employees is. It's not that kind of, maybe it is. I don't know. I just think perhaps we should think a little differently around it.
Right, and like I say, it's all singles, no doubles. In that effort, when we know somebody is applying, and, and by the way, a lot of times when I contact a precinct captain, for example, hey, Charlie's talking about leaving, going to St. Charles County. They already know about it. They're already working on it the best they can. And to those, what we have that maybe other agencies don't, the specialized assignments, those kind of things, they're all making that effort, everyone. And like I said, I'll talk about it in closed session, the effort that were made to retain the recruits that left, that they're significant, and the people that are part of that effort take, take it hard that somebody leaves. So they're, they're really putting forth a, a good effort, selling the department, identifying those things, as you've mentioned, that the, the pay and the take-home cars, it's out of their control, but they do everything else, I think, very proactively.
By the time I make my decision, it's too late. You're point of a one, one-fifty batting average.
Right.
Have continued. Quite disturbing, and got a couple of other questions that we want to ask when, when you lateral pay, and then what the twelve-hour shifts, what's going on with those two?
And then just as a, a note for two thousand twenty-two, we had fourteen experienced hires, eight came from the city. Two were reinstatements from St. Louis County, so they returned to us and were reinstated, and four were from other agencies. Doug, can you go to the next slide, please? So the the pie chart, the two thousand twenty-two police officer application source that you have in, in your packet, that is not on the screen yet. The, the, the sources, again, it's significant. It's actually gone up a little bit. The employee referral is at thirty-six percent of our, of the sources of, of the applications. And if a person is hired inexperienced, no matter what position, is eight hundred dollars to the referring employee. If the person is experienced, again, no matter what position, it's a thousand dollars to that employee.
So can you clarify that, that thirty-six percent is up year-over-year or down year-over-year?
It's, it's up from about thirty percent, I think, the, the last time I presented this, so. That, that's working, and I appreciate that. I'm always encouraging people to, to work on the referrals. I get a lot of inquiries from officers, professional staff, to give me the heads up about somebody, and so we can assist them in getting them, getting them across the finish line.
Have we looked at of these applications, which ones are the most promising? For example, are we throwing out ninety percent of the website-based applications, but only ten percent of the referral applications? Do you understand my question?
I do, and I, and I Right, I, I don't, I don't think there's a correlation. I mean, there can be somebody that, hey, you got, you got to look at Charlie. He's just great, and then we get into the background, and it's like, well, you don't know Charlie that well, that kind of a thing. And i, if it's just somebody off of a website, it could be somebody that just moved into St. Louis, is unfamiliar with the area, and they're just an awesome candidate. So I, I would suspect there is not a correlation to that. If, if there was, I, I would think the referrals probably have a higher batting average. Any comment, Mr. Chairman?
I'll let my smile be my comment. I think, I think you would find differently if you dig it.
Okay, and, and we will do that then. So as you can see, the social media, recruiting events, job fairs are relatively minimal. Again, this is self-identified also with respect to the applicant, so take that also with a, with a grain of salt. And update on ABLE? I'm sorry. So next meeting, Lieutenant Ostendorf and I will have an update on recruiting. And the meeting after that, Lieutenant Roach and I will have an update on wellness and retention.
We look forward to hearing from both, especially you. Thank you for stepping into the role.
With respect to ABLE, a quick update. Virtually all of our police officers are now ABLE-trained. The pro-staff, new hires and chaplains will be trained from April through October. Sergeant Schmidt is, is running those programs. We do have fifteen ABLE-certified instructors. There's going to be a two-hour section in in-service training this year that's an update, a refresher on ABLE. And our department, as I've said before, we're the leader in the region on ABLE. St. Louis City is picking up on it with our assistance. Ellisville is picking up on it, again, with our assistance. Ellisville is picking up on it again with our assistance and they're getting folks trained. And I, I would imagine as other departments come in, I know Maryland Heights is very interested. They're participating in our program. Manchester Baldwin, there will be many other departments that will, will follow. So shout out to Sergeant Nichols ran it before and now Sergeant Schmidt is doing a great job there.
Would we be allowed to participate?
Certainly you're welcome to, welcome to come. So typically the, the ideal attendance is about 20, give or takes, because it's very communicative. It's a, a very interactive type class, but you know, the chaplains are not mandated to go. A lot of them have obviously full time jobs, but many of them expressed interest. So we got them in and they're just going to mix in with pro staff and commissioned. If you recall, we had a problem getting the professional staff curriculum approved. Finally it got approved and they said you can mix everybody together when previously they had been against that. So everybody's going to be together and you're certainly welcome. You can contact me and I'll make sure you get into a, a class. I'll send you the dates also. And then with respect to community engagement, of course, we've talked about Ballin' in the Lou. That was a great event and a shout out to everybody that worked it from Colonel Cox, Director Ryan, on down to the, some of the cadets and recruits that did a great job. And the PAL trivia night was the week before Ballin' in the Lou. That was a lot of work for the community outreach unit and the, and the PAL unit. And there were some recruits and cadets there and explorers also, don't want to forget them. And that was a good event and it raises money for PAL. And then lastly, with Class 207, they were here in this room last month and were introduced by name individually to the council and Dr. Page. And to pleasantly surprised, they received a standing ovation. It was very, it was really moving frankly, and, and I think the recruits had a good experience with their first community engagement event. And then lastly, they, last slide, please Doug. The, as part of their charity event, their community service, they did the, the polar plunge last month at Creeve Core Lake. And there's the, the picture of them. They also got the best dressed award because I, I don't know if that's cheating or not, but they wore their reflective vests into the water and, and were able to get the, the best dressed award. So, and they raised $1,600 and it was a good event and you can, you can tell that everybody's pretty happy, especially recruit Marshall Thompson, who's flexing his muscles. And I guess he's glad that he had to work the event and didn't have to go under the water. So that's the HR update.
Back to the lateral pay. I think you answered part of the question. I'm sorry.
Of course.
He answered lateral pay. We've had 14 hires since we implemented lateral pay.
Correct.
I think you mentioned earlier in your presentation, we still have 14 application officers.
In the hopper? Thirteen.
Thirteen, alright. So total, something less than that. Pretension piece, you gave us a kind of a stat on officers who, how many of them have left? Do you guys give us an update on that in, in ABLE, please?
Of course.
Second piece is 12 hour shifts. I know we all into this, get the leadership of Cox and all of the patrol leaders to do the pilot last year, implement this year based on lessons learned. Experience shed on what it's meaning to morale, what it's meaning to physical needs, what it means to work like balance, what it means to attraction and retention. Do we have any set of data around the 12 hour shifts?
I'll make one comment and then I'll pass it off to Colonel Cox. I, the, as far as an attraction or recruiting tool, I think we talked about this last month. So many other departments do it, so I don't think it sets us apart from anybody else. And then as far as the surveys go, Colonel?
Next week. Let's go to that staffing question. We know you dropped Peter to pay Paul to make that, that's a collective unit personally. Where are we with staffing on the 12 hour shifts such as in the third or fourth in order to staff up where we have the greater issues? Understand that we think we would say, agree with that philosophy, but at some point we may have to, right? At least even just for the summer, but. Thank you.
Thank you.
Meetings. At one point we discussed the fact that on board meeting, I'm sorry, board meeting dates for the Police Foundation, that there is, there'll be a concern for me being here. And I think the board wanted to do something as far as having the board meetings in the, in the, in the community. So those dates that we have, the foundation board meetings will be April the 12th, Wednesday, Wednesday, April 12th, Wednesday, July 12th, and Wednesday, October 11th. So I've talked with Mr. Becker about getting the community engagement unit to work with setting up meetings, one north, one south, one west for the board meet, for the board to handle their, their meeting. It'll be up to the board as to what time you want to do them. Just let me know and I'll get that message to Mr. Becker. They'll work with the precinct wherever that meeting is going to be, north, south or west. And we'll obviously get IT involved so that all technical issues are, are dealt with.
Commissioner Hessler, you, oh, sorry.
Make sure I understand. So we're going to solve the conflict with the Police Foundation meetings and our goal to have in the community meetings by taking those three.
Exactly.
Okay.
Best for this to be on the, is that what your intent was?
Oh, yeah. The intent, my mind is for us to conduct business in various communities, north, south, west. Do it in evening so that there are people, you know, people who are working or whatever can come and participate and actually see us, see us not only at work, but also get a chance to met with us.
That's what the chief has offered is, or Schwerin's point meets two needs, meets three needs and including our request to do that.
That's what we'll work for. Community engagement will set it all up and we'll get the times as to what time you want to do it. Do you have the three dates? That's April 12th, July 12th, and October 11th.
Want to talk about?
Yeah, I would say the same thing. Can we pick times? If we have dates, can we pick times and pick locations? And location would be North County, South County, West County.
The precinct commanders up there will find a location for you to have.
Time?
What were those dates again?
What time, what time meets working schedules and what time meets likely meets our. They're all.
The Wednesday. Yes, so I'm, I mean, I'm thinking six o'clock meeting. Getting home from work.
It's pretty late.
And it should be pretty late.
Yeah, I get that. So it may, if you're going, what, what times are you thinking? Too early is going to miss the.
Probably going to weigh in on the, our meetings normally run four to five hours right now. If we started six, that says we concluded 11, which may not be fair to, and I would anticipate that we're probably going to have a lot more community questions, community engagement and community action, right? If we're going to four, people are going to want to speak up no matter what we put on our agenda. It's a, it's a balance. I don't, I don't have an opinion. I just, my instincts tell me that it's, it's probably going to be a little length.
I don't know whether this would be an answer to that is just do away with the closed session. Obviously the community is not going to be around for the closed session anyway, so we'll have about this time, we've been here about an hour or so to handle the open session of the meeting.
Agenda. There's a point, the point, at least for me, the, for the community, they don't know us from Adam's house cat. They don't know what we're doing. They don't, so the other side of that may be not to have a formal meeting, but maybe
Alternatively, we can officially open our meeting, session, do it maybe an hour out and have a session.
So do the closed session early.
First, so I'm going to throw a hypothetical, start at five. I'm picking a time so that we're out of, closed by six and then we can have the community.
Stuff for closing.
Always got lots.
Yeah, but we'd have to, might have, might have, that's the part.
I, I'm personally going to say you all have experienced this over your tenure. What advice would you provide us? What suggestions and recommendations?
Normally when we try to get the community involved, I think the town hall meetings, I think we usually start them at about six, 6:30 to give the people opportunity to get home from work and to show up. But that's usually the time we use for a town hall meeting.
And that's my point.
And if you did the closed session first at 4:30 or whatever, you're out of there by six o'clock. You can do, we can do the open session, maybe cut that down a bit, whatever it may be, and go through that and still give the community the opportunity to ask you guys questions.
That work? 4:30 start for the meeting, go immediately into closed session, six o'clock with the community open?
We'll just advertise the community meeting starts at six o'clock.
Alright. Hold. Up and down. Alright, very good. Anything else, Chief?
No, sir. Thank you.
Much. Thank you. We have approval of the minutes from our February 8th, 2023 meeting. We have a motion to approve those minutes.
Move the, move the minutes of our meeting February 8th.
Maybe we have a second of that motion.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? I do have a quick question. I'm sorry to ask it. I noticed that in the public forum, somebody's title of the general. Stuck my, my tongue in my cheek when I heard that, but I just, thank you for laughing. I'll, I'll just highlight that.
That's general what he thinks.
That was a little bit, little bit. I just found that to be a smile in my face. All in favor of approval of the minutes from the February 8th, 2023 meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those are so approved. Letters and communications? Any incoming communication? Additional outgoing communication? Any old business? New business? Before we get into contracts, any new business that we haven't already identified? Very good.
Lots of contracts.
Yep, lots of contracts. There are 18 total. For sake of you all not sitting here listening to me talk for about 20 minutes. Three groups of six each.
Yes, sir.
There's no methodology other than it's one third. That work? Alright, the first set, and the first six. A professional services agreement with Randy Means and Associates LLC for a new contract. By the way, all six of these are with the CMPA. For a new contract for CMP for an instructor to teach a program entitled minimizing bias and perceptions of bias for officers and their supervisors on May 17th, 2023 at a cost not to exceed $2,500. The second is a professional service agreement, also with Randy Means and Associates LLC for an instructor to teach a program entitled managing police personnel administration on May 1 and 2, 2023 at a cost not to exceed $5,000. Third of this set is a professional service agreement, also with Randy Means and Associate LLC for a new contract for an instructor to teach a program entitled internal affairs today on March 3rd, 2023 at a cost, sorry, May 3, thank you. On May 3, 2023 at a cost not to exceed $2,500. The fourth is a professional service agreement, also with Randy Means and Associates LLC for an instructor to teach a program entitled impact communication skills, de-escalation and non-escalation of contract, conflict on May 18th, 2023 at a cost not to exceed $2,500. The fifth is a professional service agreement, also with Randy Means and Associates LLC for an instructor to teach a program entitled constitutional policing on May 5th and May, sorry, May 15th and 16th, 2023 at a cost not to exceed $5,000. And the last in this batch is a professional service, finally with Randy Means and Associates LLC for an instructor to teach a program entitled committee policing nuts and bolts on May 4, 2023 at a cost not to exceed $2,500. Thank you.
Second.
Any further discussion on the first six? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright. The next six, they are also all for the CMPA. It is a, the first of the next six is a professional service agreement with Law Enforcement Risk Management Group, Inc. for an instructor to teach a program entitled supervisory supervisor liability on May 9 through May 12, 2023 at a cost not to exceed $8,500. The second of this batch is a professional service agreement with Law Enforcement Risk Management Group, Inc. for an instructor to teach a program entitled leadership for the field training officer on May 2 and May 3, 2023, cost not to exceed $6,000. Next is a professional service agreement with Law Enforcement Risk Management Group for a teacher, an instructor to teach a program entitled five stages of interview and irrigation on May 16 through May 18, 2023 at a cost not to exceed $8,500. The fourth is a professional service agreement with Training Force USA LLC for an instructor to teach a program entitled officer ambush assault awareness skills lessons learned on May 22, 2023 at a cost not to exceed $4,000. The fifth is a professional service agreement with Training Force USA LLC for an instructor to teach a program entitled compassion fatigue on May 23, 2023 at a cost not to exceed $4,000. And the last of this sixth batch is a professional service agreement with CP Crime Scene Consulting and Seminars LLC, for an instructor to teach a program entitled Comprehensive Crime Scene Investigation, on May 22 through May 26, 2023, at a cost not to exceed $5,000.
Can you approve these contracts?
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving these next six, please say aye. The last six, the, the first five are also for the CMPA. The last one, we will identify separately, just because it's not, but of the next six, a professional service agreement with Advanced Police Concepts LLC, for an instructor to teach a program entitled Sexual, Child Sexual Exploitation Investigations, on May 25th and May 26, 2023, at a cost not to exceed $4,500. The second professional service agreement was CP Crime Scene Consulting, Seminars LLC, for an instructor to teach a program, a program entitled Basic Crime Scene Investigation for Uniformed Officers and Investigators, on May 4 and May 5, 2023, at a cost not to exceed $2,000. A professional service agreement with Donald J. Van Meter and Associates INC., for an instructor to teach a program entitled Performance Improvement Program, on May 5, 2023, at a cost not to exceed $2,900. The fifth, sorry, the fourth, is a professional service agreement with Optimum Forensic Solutions LLC, for an instructor to teach a program entitled Shooting Reconstruction, on May 25th through May 27th, 2023, at a cost not to exceed $8,415. The fifth is a professional service agreement with SBCM Protection Consultants, for an instructor to teach a program entitled The Devil Comes at Midnight, on April 20th, 2023, at a cost not to exceed $1,000. And the last is a professional service agreement with Roll Call Platform. It is a new contract with Roll Call Platform to provide, excuse me, a comprehensive third-party secondary employment management process for clients in connection with jobs managed by county personnel, as well as for clients in connection with jobs outsourced to Roll Call for management. The Roll Call Platform streamlines those staffing, provides transparency, assists with ensuring policy compliance, and facilitates invoices and payments.
There was a, in the last meeting, I think Commissioner Hasler had a question about The Devil Comes at Midnight. Get that?
Title didn't give any idea about what it was.
You're okay with it.
Actually, a stress management.
No, as long as you're satisfied with it, I don't need to get a question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah.
Fine, very good. May we have a motion to approve the final six contracts?
Move them.
Second.
Uh, any further conversation? All in favor of approving the, approving the final six contracts, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have eighteen contracts approved for the next few months for the CMPA and secondary employment. Lieutenant Schellman? Sorry. My bad. My apologies, my bad.
It's all good, I do it myself every day.
Call him general, please.
Yes. All right, so we have two, uh, pieces of policy, two general orders, um, to get approved today. The first one is a revised General Order 62, which is a registration of sex offenders. Revisions in the order were made to include new procedures for documenting the verification of a sex offender's address. The order also explains in more detail the procedures to follow if a sex offender fails to register. Two new forms were created, department forms, as well as a door hanger to be posted at a sex offender's reg, uh, registered residence during the verification process. Stakeholders from, uh, the SOAR unit, which is our Sex Offender Registration and Enforcement Unit, were consulted and provided in, most of the input, uh, during the policy development. They recommended no further changes, uh, from this. And then obviously, as you know, in addition, the County Counselor's Office, uh, the Ethical Society of Police, the Fraternal Order of Police, and the Diversity and Inclusion Unit, were all, um, given copies of this as well. Any questions regarding registration of sex offenders?
Update it substantially to bring it in compliance with the requirements of the Child Protection Safety Act. Is that primarily what?
Yes.
Other questions? Motion to approve Department General Order 23 dot O, sorry, dash O62.
We approve General Order 23 O6.
Second.
Further conversation? All in favor of approv, approving General Order 23 O62, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. The second one is a new policy, the RIC Policy, Regional Information and Intelligence Center. This policy was developed to address the creation, implementation, and functions of the RIC. This policy includes the operational overview, processing of investigative and camera installation requests, data collection, access to the RIC, maintenance and evaluation of technology, and auditing. And obviously, the stakeholders were those folks who work day-to-day in the RIC, and this draft, as always, was provided to the same groups. Uh, and I failed to mention on the last one, but as you are well aware of the policy process, but for those listening, uh, our executive command staff and command staff have both approved and adopted these policies. Any questions regarding, um, new General Order 110, Regional Information and Intelligence?
I had one question.
Yes.
Which organization or entity establishes the Fair Information Practice principles that are referenced in, since 7A1, that the RIC shall adhere to basic privacy principles known as fair information?
I've got my, uh, handy sidekick, Lieutenant Jeff Warner here, who, uh, was instrumental.
So that they're established, they're not going to change, they are what they are?
Talked about it being new, and you talked about the why it's new. Do other functions have general order around them, right? Does patrol have a general order? Does HR have a general order? Does security have a general order? And if not, why unique to this one?
Well, because this touches the entire department. So the entire department needs to know what the policies and procedures of the RIC, because of all the functions as laid out in here. Um, patrol or human resources, everybody has their own bureau procedures that would be specific to those bureaus. The RIC will also have those as well, but this is just giving an overview for the entire department on, um, some of the resources that they provide.
Other questions? Motion to approve Department General Order 23 dash 110.
Prove departmental.
Second.
Any further questions? All in favor of approving General Order 23 dash 110, please say aye? Captain, you have two new policies, or two new general orders?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything from the public? Very good. The Board of Police Commissioners may vote to go into closed meeting for legal advice and review of claims and lawsuits involving the Police Department, Section 610 dot O211 RSMO, and Section 114 dot 020 dot 11 SLCRO, in discussion of employee and personnel matters, Section 610 O213 and 13 RSMO, and Sections 114 dot O20 dot 13 and 13 SLCRO. May we have a motion to move into closed meeting?
We move into closed meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Banks?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassler?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwerin?
Yes.
We are in closed session.
Perhaps today, are you standing? Votes in closed session, too?
I gotta do it on, I gotta do it on the record. You're welcome to say it.
On the record?
Yes.
Put it on the record that we voted to come back. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, yeah, I got you. Good. Um, we are back from closed session. We had one vote in the closed session, and the vote to return to the open session, it was done through roll call, and each commissioner voted yes to return to open session. We're now in open session. Uh, anything else that we need to address or to adjournment? May we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Any further conversation on adjournment? Uh, Diana, would you do a roll call vote for adjournment?
Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Banks?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassler?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
I, yeah, I did hear both of them.
So it's one favor, two favors. Don't injure yourself, don't have a car wreck, and don't get another speeding county police officer. Actor, I. He pulled you over, he didn't. Oh, well, I thought it was a county guy. Wow, I got all my facts wrong.